I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion we go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property if the Chair declares the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public party pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, Paragraphs A, 6, and to come out of executive session and reconvene in an open meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the Chair does declare that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection 6. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simonian?
Yes.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
And the Chair vote chess. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Monday, November 24th, Meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise to the Pledgeable Agents, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as one.
First item we have is Public Comment, and we have Wayne Page.
Good evening. Wayne Page, 900 Carmen Road. I'm just coming up tonight again to that time of year where we do the Santa Claus calling show, and we'll be doing it on December 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So all the children, parents, I'll give them a little heads up on it now, but there'll be more flies and stuff coming out, but it will be December 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. So the children can call in. If anybody wanted to come in and do a little story or a brief song, then don't hesitate to give me a call at (508) 832-3581. Anybody, children, parents, anybody can come in. We welcome you, and this show has been going for many years, and it's been great, and just so pleasurable to have the kids call in and talk to Santa about what they want for Christmas and the songs that they do, and we're just gonna keep it going and going and going. And on another quick note, I would like to say thanks to the residents of the Town of Auburn and some of the businesses in the Town of Auburn for supporting to keep Auburn Warm, which we raise money for fuel for people that are needy in the Town of Auburn during the wintertime, and I want to thank them for the outstanding support that we had at the roast chicken supper we had last month and the continued help of our residents and businesses to support that cause, to help out our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we have Bob Plutkus.
Bob Plutkus, 231 Milbury Street, Chairman of the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee. Over two years ago, I talked about the aggregation or the bulk buying of electricity for the citizens in the Town of Auburn, and we're now facing huge electric bills. I remember the Chair, through the Chair, had held up the newspaper, I believe, and said a 33% increase. I'm here tonight to give you a heads up, it may not be 33%. Percentages are determined by what month you're comparing it to, and if you try to do the math and the rate increases, you may have trouble getting 33% out of it over the October 2014 bill. I'm budgeting myself for someplace around a 90% increase. I'm thinking as bad as it could be, and the reason that I'm saying that, and we all know the games that people play with percentages, we've heard that discussion many times here, is that I believe that they're counting the rate increase from the high point last year in the energy crisis, and it's 33, it may be 33% above that. That's a lot different than 33% of the October 2014 bill. A huge difference. One is 33%, the other one might be closer to 90%. I hope I'm wrong, but if you do the numbers, it doesn't seem to work out to 33%. Well, we're gonna find out in the next few days, and if that goes through the winter, I'm budgeting for the 90%, and I think that people need heads up that this bill could be a huge surprise. I also want to invite anyone who's interested in the bulk buying of electricity to our meeting with the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee on December 1st with the Town Manager's approval. We have, we've been interviewing companies, and she already has the power and the right to sign a contract with an aggregation, the bulk buying of electricity for citizens. And I'm here to continue to encourage her to do that with the correct company, and we're asking them hard questions. If you wanted to be there and ask hard questions, please join us. There's always room for citizens to give their comments, or you can call your questions in to the Town Government, and the Town Planner would bring them to the meeting. But to give you an example, one of the companies coming is buying electricity for a city north of here, northeast of here, at 10.8 cents per kilowatt. National Grid is offering us a rate, according to the Boston Globe, of 24.4%, .24%. That's according to the Boston Globe. Now, that's a huge difference. Figure it out. Now, these companies that tell us they can only save us a few dollars, you know, and I'm quoting that-
Mr. Plutkus, would you just give the date and time of that meeting again, please?
December 1st, 5:30 PM, in the Planning Board Room.
Okay.
And we're having two guests, two companies come, and they're going to do half an hour presentations each, and they will be open to questions from the committee members, hard questions, too.
Okay.
And, of course, we all want to know that they have a good rating with the Better Business Bureau.
Okay.
You know of the company I exposed years ago that had a lousy one, an F1, and had hundreds of complaints still pending, and yet was recommended as a gold standard when I was with Chairman of the Veterans Memorial Car터 Committee. So we always want to make sure that they are working with the Better Business Bureau. I hope people study up on the aggregation of electricity or the bulk buying for this. Now, this is not the town. The town is already doing a great job, as far as I'm concerned, and the school department is too, on buying electricity cheaply for the town. This is for the citizens and businesses, and you all have questions on contracts. Example, if you have solar, sign this contract with another company, can you get out of it? Are you stuck, are you with it? How do you opt out? For how long you can opt out? What is the best contract, the length of the contract? Those are just a few of the questions that need to be asked these companies. And have they ever done business in Massachusetts?
Okay. We're gonna move on and encourage people to attend your meeting or send in information and watch that meeting also.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question. I'm trying to remember who, some, another town around here recently entered into a similar contract to what you're talking about.
Yes, sir. Chelton is in the process unless to join the Hampshire Council of Governments.
Do you know, just, I mean, ballpark, do you know what kind of savings they're looking at by doing what they're doing?
Well, the, I believe Marlboro was gone also for the next contract with the Hampshire Council of Governments, which is a nonprofit, which means they don't have to give anything to stockholders. I talked with them, and they're doing business with one city, and they've signed a contract for a couple of years at 10.8 cents per kilowatt. So those people have an electric rate less than 50% of what National Grid will be charging. Bob Plutkus and Mr. Stephen Simonian.
Thank you.
And anyone else who is a member of National Grid. I'd also give one word of warning is make sure when you sign a contract with an individual company, read the fine print, because you can get a notice in a few months that your rate has just gone way up after six months or a year.
Thank you, Mr. Plutkus.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Anne McMaster.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Library Director here at Auburn Public, and I wanted to give all of you an update on the library's renovation project. We started in, really, in September, starting to prepare the building to go through a major renovation project on our own versus hiring a company to move the library. So we took the initiative to decide that we were not closing the library for the length of time it would take, and we turned our garage into the library. We moved stacks, moved shelving, books, DVDs. We hooked up a wireless internet line down there, so our patrons who still use the library could get every service that the main library offers at a daily basis. We began the project by moving officially into the garage on October 6th. We officially reopened the library, not the entire library, but the two main parts of the library, November 17th. For the time that we were in the garage library, we stayed there until October 26th, when it really simply got either too rainy or too cold to remain open down there. And we then hooked a doorbell service up to our front door, and patrons were told through the internet, our Facebook page, our library page, the newspapers, to ring the doorbell or give us a call ahead of time, and if we could find the materials in the building, you could have the materials. By doing that, we, our circulation numbers were only down by 40% from the previous year. However, when we figured those numbers, we did not take into consideration that the library was actually closed 16 more hours this year per week than last year. So it turns out our numbers are more like 18% off, which is kinda cool. We purchased boxes to, of course, put all our material in, and we had the pre-release team come in for about nine days, and they helped box them and label them and put them away for us, for us to put the new rug in, and when we're done with the boxes, instead of simply disposing them or sending them off to a recycling place, we sent them to the school department, and the school department will use those boxes in the coming months for their move. So the library is now back open. We have estimated, because we haven't quite got all our bills in, saved about $40,000 by us doing the move ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. And next, we have Jack Barkus.
Jack Barkus, 67 Rockland Road. I'd like to have one of the board members make a motion to move up 8D, to have it taken up after Item 4.
So we're finished Public Comments, so the next item-
Actually, I, just one quick, forgot to sign up for Public Comment. We're coming back from Executive Session. I don't want to leave anyone out, because we've done it before. So since our last meeting, just a quick shout out. For those of you who don't know, the High School Girls Field Hockey Team made it to the State Finals, lost again to Watertown, but apparently, from what I understand, they haven't lost a game since some of us were in diapers, so they got a pretty good, we'll get them one of these years, anyway.
So we are going to reopen the Continued Public Hearing on Southhold Road land, notice of intent to sell for other use per Mass. General Law, Chapter 61A, Section 14, land along Southhold Road and Southhold Meadow Road. Is there a motion to reopen the Continued Public Hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The hearing is open. Is there also a motion to move up Item, Agenda Item 8D, which is the discussion on the gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, which ties into the public hearing?
Motion to move up 8D, Agenda Item 8D.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or voted? So the Continued Public Hearing for Southhold Road is reopened. Is there anyone here who wanted to speak to that? Mr. Barkus.
I don't know if it's time now, but I'd like to speak about the funding for that. A lot are reading a lot, they compare this with Packer Char Crossing of, you know, 30, 40 years ago. When they bought Packer Char Crossing, if you look today, there's a beautiful Pappas Recreation Complex. If we take the million dollars gift, there could be no Pappas Recreation Center. The church bought some land to build a church. If we take the million dollar gift, that wouldn't be possible. There's a Senior Citizen Center on that land. If we take the gift, there'd be no Senior Citizen Center. Some of those lots were sold on Garter Drive. We got some money back from the, the town got some money back from their, their purchase price. Now, someone wants to put up a million dollars out of $2.8 million, that figures out to be roughly 35%. I never heard of anything which, you know, where somebody would, you know, contribute 35% of something and would have, would have 100% say. The person that put the 65% in, you'd think, at least, you know, I consider myself a reasonable person, that the person that put the 65% in, or the person or group, that they would have more of the say than the person that put in the 35%. And I just, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I am. I mean, I've heard a lot of rumors about this, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna repeat them, but I would just like to know, and from our Town Attorney, if, if we do accept this $1 million gift, that the donor of the gift, neither he, she, or anyone else would be anything to be able to do anything with that land. In other words, that they get, they get nothing for the million dollars. I mean, in this day and age, nobody, nobody donates a million dollars for nothing. I mean, if you donate it to a school, you know, they put your name on the building, or they name a field after you, or something, but, you know, someone to just hand you a million, I mean, I, I don't know, they tell you, don't look the gift lost in the mouth, but I, I think this, you know, we could do absolutely nothing, nothing with that, with that land, and I mean, I think that would be a terrible, terrible decision for the town, and anybody that would make a decision like that for the, you know, negative aspect for the town, I, I know I couldn't give them, you know, ever give them my vote again, and it just, I am just, I'm in favor, I was definitely in favor of buying the land from day one, but certainly never, never, never taking that million dollar gift. I mean, the gift isn't, the gift isn't certainly for the townspeople, because we'll get nothing back from that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Mr. Hammond?
My name is Nicholas Hammond, H-A-M-M-O-N-D. I just want to thank all the Town Meeting members who came out and voted 98 to 2 to support this. It was absolutely amazing. I want to thank Mr. Maha, Mr. Proudty, and everybody else who really worked with everyone to make this a grassroots effort. I've said it before, I think the information coming from the town was lacking, but it was the residents like Mr. Maha, Mr. Proudty, and other people who really wanted to see this project go through that brought this to the forefront, and I believe, and I could be wrong, brought it to a forefront to a point where somebody watching decided to offer a million dollar gift. So without them, we probably don't have this. It seemed like, based on the presentations early on by the town, they were ready to let this go through, and it was the residents, the citizens, Town Meeting, who actually had the nerve to, to vote and support this. So thank you to everyone who did that. The million dollars is extremely generous, and I think there was a value to the million dollars, because it certainly did increase the spotlight that this town, that, that we needed for this project. And I am for open space, but to take a million dollars and never be able to develop the land, never to be able to do anything with it in perpetuity, like as long as the Earth spins, as long as the US government stands, that seems like an awful long time. And I was at the Keeping Auburn Warm Dinner, and, which was a very nice event, so well job, well done, Wayne. And somebody came up to me, and they said, you know, this is kinda like if you owned the Red Sox, but you were a minority owner, and you get to decide who was gonna be on the team and what the salaries were gonna be, and, and, you know, who's, who to hire as the manager, but you only owned a minority stake in the team. And that's kinda what we have here, is a minority owner who gets to make all the executive decisions. I know business doesn't work like that, so while, you know, while I think the gift is a great gesture, and I think it's an amazing thing that anyone would step up and offer it, I have to say, if there's, if you're saying you can't do anything with this land in perpetuity, as long as the Earth spins, as long as the government functions, as long as there's a court of law, that's a long time. It's not 100 years, it's not 50 years, it's forever. So I really think the town should think long and hard before you accept what really is a donation, because a gift doesn't come with strings, am I right? I mean, you get a gift at Christmas, imagine if they said, well, you can, you know, I need it back on Fridays. It just doesn't work, so it's really a donation. It's not a gift. A gift doesn't have strings. Donations have strings, and that's okay. It's extremely, extremely generous. But I'm hoping that the Board will finally make a decision in this project that's right and vote not to take the gift or the donation and just pay for the land. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Are there any board members who want to speak? So I'll just give an update for, for those involved. This public hearing will be continued and kept open until the end of the process. As you're all aware, Town Meeting voted to support the financing of the purchase of the, of the land. We are following the statute and the timeline for this, and we'll keep people updated, but I can assure you that all timelines will be met and procedure will be followed for the purchase of this property. Did you want to add anything? Anything else, Mr. Henigan, we need to cover tonight? No? So is there a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you. The next item we have is-
That was a motion that was brought up, and we're gonna move it forward, so I don't know if you want to discuss that or not.
So to follow up on Mr. Barkus's request to, regarding the gift, is there, is there an interest from board members on taking a position on this tonight, or are we going to continue it through, you know, while we're in the process of negotiating a purchase and sale? Mr. Holstrom?
I would believe that the best thing we could do is we wait till the end of the hearing, get some more information, because I know that the purchase and sale is in process. They're still discussing that, and I don't believe we have sufficient information to make a intelligent decision on the whole package until they come back with all that information to us. So I would not want to make a commitment to that million dollars tonight.
Is that a motion to hold it?
No, make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Simonian?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not exactly sure with this motion. Can you repeat that?
Make a motion that we hold the vote on the $1 million donation until such time that the process is completed with the purchase and sale agreement.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Simonian?
Oh, yeah, well-
You had, I mean, you had asked to have it repeated.
Well, before we vote, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I've said before several times, I'm in favor of open space, but in this case, I do agree with some of the comments that were made, while I believe this is a very generous donation, and I also believe that we are lucky to live in a community where someone would care enough to do this. I can't, I cannot, and I've said this before, so I'm not gonna change my position when similar things have come up, I don't believe that it's responsible for me in any way, shape, or form to handcuff future boards of Selectment Town Administrators or whatever by voting to take that land and say, we can never do anything with it. So I'm not gonna support the motion.
Anything else? Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
You have that, Sean? Thank you. I see Representative Frost is here in the audience. He does have an agenda item on. Is there an interest in moving up? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Come up. I didn't see your hand, I saw you.
Kevin Maher, 4 Stonebridge Drive. Last name is spelled M-A-H-E-R. Quick question. I know there's a legal process, and I know I've sent everybody an email regarding that. Do you have a sense when this Board will vote, either exercise the option, the purchase, or not exercise the option, the purchase? I'm not asking the methodology of how you're gonna pay for it. I mean, you have the million dollar gift, or you do the full borrowing. So when is this Board gonna vote to exercise the option?
We'll be looking at either, we'll be looking at either December 4th or December 8th, and that information, you know, will be made public once that meeting is set. We're checking scheduling, but even if we vote it on the December 8th, we still meet the timeline and notification to the seller.
Can the Town at this stage vote to exercise the option, that they will be exercising the option that they have?
Not until after the Town Meeting vote is certified.
Okay. When will that be? I think what I'm concerned about here is the timeline, I think.
Right, and I, all I can do is do my best to assure you that we, we have met, we will meet the legal requirements of the timeline, but we cannot take a position until Town Meeting vote has been certified, and that, when is that date? Wednesday, November 26th?
That's when it gets certified?
Yes.
Okay.
So then we will-
That's maybe a little out of the box, but can the Vote Board take a will of their position vote?
I think you're pretty, I think you've seen that by our vote to go to Town Meeting-
Yeah.
-that, you know, that the Board is looking to support the purchase of this land, but we're not going to enter into any legal vote until-
No, I wasn't asking a legal vote. You know, the Board has, can express their opinions. I've heard a couple of Board members say they want to buy it, but-
Well, I think, I think it was a, it was a four to one, it was a four to, four votes in support of the funding for, asking Town Meeting to support the funding of this purchase, which, I mean, I can't see that that wouldn't be-
Okay. Last question, then, request, maybe.
And I'd just like, just let me just finish on the vote, and Mr. Carpenter, although he was unable to take a position on the vote, he expressed publicly that he supported.
Request. Can you publish on the Town's website the timeline that you will be following so that we all know that you have certain threshold requirements you are meeting? Do you have like a list of what you're supposed to be doing in terms of what the deadlines are, like the Town Meeting vote needs to be certified, and when that is done, you can vote on whether to exercise the option or not, and then you can make the decision whether you want to take the gift or not? Because people out here don't get a lot of, it's a little like reaching your hand into a bowl of spaghetti.
Well, we can certainly put the timeline on. The $1 million- Mr. Henigan?
Correct.
Is this in regards to the purchase of the land or the gift?
Both.
So, so I think at this point, we would need to reopen the hearing, so that it's made part of the official record of the public hearing.
Motion reopen the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or voted?
Correct me if I'm wrong. So the board took a vote to support the authorization at town meeting to borrow the money of $2.865 million. That's the vote that was taken. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the board did not take a vote to actually execute the expenditure of $2.865 million, or support the spending of it. Is that correct? And that's what we're waiting on. In other words, town meeting can authorize the spending. The executive branch does not have to spend it. Is that correct?
That's correct. But I, as I said, I think that this board has indicated its intent without, without tying our hands regarding the timeline.
So, knowing that, we have a 61A process that says it's take it or leave it. You have an executive session that has a negotiation of a purchase and sale, which by definition is 61A, says take it or leave it. Now we have an authorization by town meeting, they did their job, great job, town meeting, and the citizen activists, who also took a position on this, and they did their job. However, the board seems to be holding out, taking the specific vote to buy this land. And I understand you don't want to handcuff yourself to a legally binding sting, but the board could certainly take a vote, just like town meeting could have, contingent upon the proper negotiation. Okay? So it gives you an exit. There is nothing stopping this board tonight from taking a position to buy this land, expend the $2.865 million that was authorized by town meeting, contingent upon the negotiation in executive session, which I can't fathom what's being negotiated, because 61A is pretty clear. But I can fathom, the fathom is this, it's what I warned you a month ago. There's another parcel of land that's attached to that, I think it's section 18, in the purchase and sales agreement. There's another parcel of land. I don't expect you guys to speak on it, because I suspect it's executive session. And that's what's tying you up. That's what the executive session is, and you guys failed to go to town meeting for the authorization of $3.115 million to buy all of the land. Now you put yourself in a bind. You guys now have to figure out how to litigate this, negotiate it, to break up these two purchase and sales agreements. If you're wrong, this thing's going to fail, and you've left yourself no time to get out, because you waited until October to even to bring it to the public's attention. Now, I'm guessing here, so to the people at home, to my friends in the audience, to my friends on Packerchuck Hill, this is my guess, because I have no knowledge, because you're doing an executive session. And I hope I'm wrong. But my concern is this, this board will not take a position. Everyone else takes a position, and you can take it contingent upon anything, which will make you not legally binded to anything. You could each individually say, "I'm not going to take a vote, but here's my personal view. I want to buy the land." Not, "Well, we voted for the authorization of town meeting to do it." Yeah, but you're the Board of Selectmen. Town meetings, town meetings like Congress. You guys are like the Senate. The Congress authorized you to spend the money. Are you willing to spend it? Those are two separate votes, those are two separate issues. Town meeting can authorize you to spend $100 million. The board can choose not to spend a penny. And that's what you're saying, is why we voted to support the authorization of spending, we're not quite ready to say we're willing to spend it. So this issue is, is not over. I don't understand what the delay is, although I think I have an idea, which is that other purchase and sale. It's something that needs to be litigated, and you guys were warned.
Is there anything else? Anything else? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
To continue the hearing to the next meeting?
Continue the meeting, to continue the hearing, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So the next, as I started to say, I see Representative Frost is here in the audience. He has a very brief agenda item. Item 8C, would the board, out of a courtesy to Representative Frost, move that item up?
I'll make a motion that we move up. Item 8C. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Representative Frost, do you have an agenda item on here?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the members of the Board of Selectmen. I do have an agenda item, however, we can take, we can get rid of the representative title for a second, and just keep it as Paul Frost from Auburn, a father of, and coach in Auburn Fast Pitch Softball, and a board member now. And the organization of Auburn Fast Pitch Softball is seeking a, I believe, an open air permit, if I have that correct terminology, to have a clothes and toy drive at the Auburn Fire Station on Saturday, December 6th. We did put on the form 9 to 3, but I think we're just going to do it from 9 to 2, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And we're just simply looking for the town's permission to have that, and the clothes drive will benefit, clothes collected will be turned into cash donations by a organization or a company that will give it back to the Auburn Fast Pitch Softball League, which has been serving the town in girls softball since 1976, formerly known as Auburn Lassie League back then. And the toy drive that will also run at the same time, any toys we collect will be donated and given to Auburn Youth and Family Services. And the league would just like to be able to have a high-profile spot to do that, and the fire station would, would, would really help us out. And they have an opening, and they have penciled this in pending your, your decision here today.
Okay. So, just a question on, the toy drive, new toys to be distributed, and the clothes drive is for used items that you, that they purchase and by weight, I guess, or something?
Exactly, exactly, yes.
For cash. So you're not looking for new donations?
No.
Okay, just so you can explain that a little bit.
No, clothes, yeah. The toys would have to be new, because, you know, the clothes drive portion of it would simply just be any used clothes, anything that's worn, torn, no longer of any value. Instead of going in the trash, which can cause an issue with, you know, while it'd be more trash, in this case, would have to be incinerated. In other communities, it could be trash that goes into their landfills, whereas this can be reused and recycled, and that's what the company does, and they provide nonprofit organizations, such as Auburn Fast Pitch Softball League, an opportunity to bring in any clothes of any condition, and they'll weigh them, and they give them back.
Just one moment, just if you can hold on one second. We're having a difficult time hearing you, so we're going to ask them to clear the hall. Just to make sure that you get what you're looking for, when you, when people show up for the donations. New toys, used clothes?
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah, new toys, yes. And that'll go to Auburn Youth and Family Services. We collect it on December 6th, we'll bring it right to them, and I believe they're planning on a distribution around the 15th, the 16th of the month of December to get out to the needy families and the children who could, you know, just sorely need them and use them for the holiday and for Christmas. And then, and then, of course, again, like I said, the clothes drive would be, you know, anything. If you don't think it, it could be torn, it could be ripped, it could be any sort of clothing whatsoever. Put it in a bag, bring it down, and we'll get rid of it for you.
They take it by, they take it by weight, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we have, we don't have it in our packet, but the chief has confirmed that he has given permission for that date and time. Mrs. Brotherton?
I'm sorry, Mr. Frost, is this strictly to children, like children's clothing, or...
Any clothing.
Any clothing, adult clothing also?
Yeah, the clothing portion of it is just anything you have, again, it can be stained, it can be ripped, it can be torn, anything you're not going to use anymore, just throw it in a bag, bring it on down. They'll take it, and then the company will find a use for it, to recycle it.
Very good, thank you.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application and to approve waiving the fee for December 6th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so that the Auburn Fast Pitch Softball League can do a clothes, gently used clothes drive and a new toy drive.
Motion to separate the toy drive and the fee waiving should be separate motions.
So just the motion to approve the license?
Well, I do both, but I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Now, is there a separate motion regarding the waiving of the fee?
I'd also like to make a motion to approve waiving the fee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you. Good luck with your event.
Right, thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving to you all, and to everyone in the town of Auburn.
Same to you, too.
Thank you.
The next item we have is Massport, Mass DOT, update on the traffic from the airport signage. Mr. Coyle, if you want to come up? Okay, you have...
I'd like to introduce the members. Good evening, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, Madam Chair, members of the board. Back in 2011, Mass DOT and Massport had come before the town of Auburn to the Board of Selectmen at that time, requesting approval to install guidance signs to direct traffic to the Worcester Regional Airport, and they committed at that time to report back to the town with any impacts that, relative to the traffic that may have occurred, and just update us on the traffic volume. So this evening, I want to introduce, from Mass DOT is Barry Lorium. Barry is the District Operations Engineer, and also from Massport, Shalise Schongel. And Shalise is the Senior Airport Planner with Massport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And hello again, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I think this is the fourth time we've been here in the past four years or so. So, you voted back in 2011 to request that we come in on a yearly basis to provide an update on the traffic volumes along the, what we call the Auburn-Worcester route to the airport, which is really from the 290, 9395 interchange to Route 12, to Oxford Street North, to Pinehurst Avenue, and then into Worcester to the airport. So, we're here again tonight to provide an update on those traffic volumes, and we have a request also. For the update, we've been taking traffic volumes at different times of the year for the past four years. We've got about six counts. I have four with me tonight. And we see pretty steady traffic volumes. In fact, we have a count station on the southern part of Oxford Street North, where we see between 7,300 and 6,300 vehicles per day, and it varies between those two numbers depending on the time of the year that the counts are taking. But generally, we can go back four years, and the counts were, in that instance, I believe, a little bit, a little bit higher back four years ago. So we're seeing very steady traffic counts on the south section of Oxford Street North. As we move northerly and north of Auburn Street, where that road picks up a lot of volume, we're seeing numbers between 13,000 and 15,000. And the most recent count, which was in early November, is just slightly higher than the count we took back in 2011, a couple hundred vehicles per day higher. So, of all the counts we've taken there as well, we're seeing very consistent traffic volumes along that corridor, which leads us to believe that there's, there hasn't been a significant increase in traffic along that corridor due to the operational changes at Worcester Regional Airport. So, we've provided the detail, the detail and the breakdown of the traffic volumes to, to the, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, for his, his review and comment, if he has comments. And it's also our understanding that there hasn't really been any major, there haven't been any major concerns along that corridor associated with increased, increased traffic volumes. So, you know, in a nutshell, our report on traffic volumes is kind of more the same. Volumes are about the same. The board voted back in 2011 to have us come in on a yearly basis to, to update the board and request that the three signs that are on town layout be, be allowed for an additional year. So, we're here to ask that the board vote to, I guess, waive that requirement, given that the traffic volumes have been fairly consistent for four years, so that, so that we don't need to come back, excuse me, on a yearly basis and request that the signs stay up for another year, but rather the signs would just stay up, I guess, in perpetuity, or until, of course, the board requests that they come down. And also, at any point, you know, Massport, Mass DOT are willing to come in and give you another update. We would continue to take traffic volumes. We'll take them once a year, provide them to, probably directly to the town for their review. But I guess we're just asking that we don't have to come back in every year to request that the signs stay up for another year.
Okay. Do you anticipate any additional activity, shall I say, at the airport in the next year or two years? We haven't seen, you know, although there's hopes of different airlines coming in and increased number of flights, where, as you pointed out, we're just not seeing it as well. I just, I wouldn't have a problem with your request. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I just want to be sure that we're notified if there's any increase at all in the traffic counts, or change in the activity, or discussion of a change of preferred routes to the airport.
I think that's, that's a fair request, and I can't speak for, for Massport as to the, any planned changes at the airport, but if there, if there are any planned changes, or if for any reason the board wants us to come back in, we're very happy to come in again. But if I could defer to you, Shalise?
I'm just, a board member has a question. I'm just going to give him an opportunity to ask this question.
Yeah, I have a question. During your presentation, you said that the corridor was from 290, 395 through Auburn. But if I recall correctly, when we originally took the vote to place the signs, the corridor was also directing traffic off of the Mass Pike through Auburn.
Which one of the signs?
Yes, exactly. So maybe I misstated exactly the route, but the route starts at the I-90, 395, 290, Route 12 interchange.
Okay.
And then on to Southbridge Street, Route 12, and then on to Oxford Street North. So I think it's the same route that you're referring to.
I mean, we have a couple of exits off of 290, so I just want to make sure we're talking about the same place. Okay?
Absolutely.
Fine, fair enough. Thanks.
At the moment, there are no planned changes to the operations at the airport. We're working with JetBlue, and their, their load factors are 85%, and we're working to attract other airlines, but there are no, nothing on the pipeline yet.
Thank you. So, do board members have any questions or comments? One second, Mr. Frost. No questions or comments? Representative Frost?
I think that's a, that's a fair request, and I can't speak for Mass Port as to the, any planned changes at the airport, but if there, if there are any planned changes or if for any reason the board wants us to come back in, we're very happy to come in again. But if I could defer to you, Shalise.
I'm just, a board member has a question, I'm just going to give him an opportunity to ask this question.
Yeah, I have a question. During your presentation, you said that the corridor was from 290-395 through Auburn, but if I recall correctly, when we originally took the vote to place the signs, the corridor was also directing traffic off of the Mass Pike through Auburn.
Which one of the signs?
Yes, exactly, so maybe I misstated exactly the route, but the route starts at the I-90, 395, 290, Route 12 interchange.
Okay.
And then on to Southbridge Street, Route 12, and then on to Oxford Street North. So I think it's the same route that you're referring to.
I mean, we have a couple of exits off of 290, so I just want to make sure we're talking about the same place.
Absolutely.
Okay, fine, fair enough, thanks.
Sure.
At the moment, there are no planned changes to the operations at the airport. We're working with JetBlue, and their load factors are 85%, and we're working to attract other airlines, but there are no, nothing on the pipeline yet.
Thank you. So do board members have any questions or comments? One second, Ms. Frost. No questions or comments, Representative Frost?
You're lucky I was here for something else. Representative Paul Frost, also a town resident here in Auburn. Years ago, we have tackled this issue and had a big pu-ha in the late 90s and early 2000s over airport access road issues and concerns that if nothing was ever built within the city of Worcester, they'd improve east-west access route, that there'd be some concern that Auburn would naturally become a default access road to an airport. I fully recognize that JetBlue and maybe if you add another airline on top of it isn't going to add drastic traffic volumes in any direction or any route. But one of my concerns over the years has always been that the city of Worcester, as much as at the time when they had ownership of the airport, wanted the state to do more for it, to build it up, to bring more airlines in, do all this, that, and the other thing, but when it came, push came to shove, to improve that east-west access in the city to connect to the airport, they always fell short. What progress, if you don't mind me asking, is the city of Worcester bringing to the table to try to improve that access before 10 years from now, or some, you know, 14 years from now, the town of Auburn has taken that burden? If you don't mind me asking that question, I apologize if, that's okay, thank you.
That's a great question and a good point. So there are six signed or recognized routes to Worcester Airport, and those are just really six more major routes. There are many more routes than that that people use because it is generally a local airport. But what Mass Port and Mass DOT have done is recognize the six probably most used routes just based on the functional classification of the roadway and signed all of those routes. I think we have over 80, 80 or so signs in place today, depending on which direction you're coming from. So we know that any traffic volumes associated with the airport are really distributed over a large number of routes to the airport. But we also fully recognize that there was, airport traffic alone could not support an access road from an interstate to the airport, simply there's, there's not enough volume there to justify it. So we've taken an approach, working with Central Mass Regional Planning and other communities to try, or actually Worcester mainly, to try to improve access from 290 to the airport. We've identified three routes. One is along Route 9, the Pleasant Street-Hayland Street corridor, the other is along Chandler Street, 122 corridor, and there's another more southern route that comes in along Hope Ave and brings you that way from 290 towards the airport, towards Webster Square. So those are the three kind of primary east-west routes through the city of Worcester that we felt would be used to some extent if you're accessing the airport. So we had envisioned projects along those corridors to improve access and decrease travel times and delays along those corridors. To date, only one has been put into place, it's actually in place now, we're constructing improvements along the Highland Street, Pleasant Street corridor to try to improve safety, but really improve mobility along that corridor so people are more likely to use it. So recognizing that we can't go in and build an access road, it's not feasible from a, from an environmental standpoint and a cost standpoint, we're taking a lower build approach and trying to improve existing routes like, like the Highland Street corridor, which is currently under construction. Our hopes, we hope to start something on Chandler Street in the near future, we've got nothing planned right now, but the city of Worcester has also made some improvements at like Webster Street and Hope Ave, they put a roundabout in to try to keep traffic moving there. So I think small incremental improvements along existing routes to the airport is where we're going, rather than one larger project.
Thank you. Is there anything else? So if the board is willing, it entertain a motion to approve the signage with a requirement that if there is any change in the traffic patterns, I mean, traffic study or airport activity, that they come before the board and also require that they provide an annual update to our DPW Director.
So moved.
Is there a second? Under discussion, Mr. Simoneon?
Yeah. Can we get a copy of the information that is given to Mr. Coyle? I mean, since we're being asked to vote, it'd be nice to see those numbers and, you know, to, and to see the annual reports. I really, it may seem, it may seem minor to some people, but I really don't like to vote on anything that I haven't had an opportunity to at least review, and, you know, I have no reason not to believe you, but just, you know, I mean, it's one of those things, I like to know exactly what it is I'm voting on before I actually vote, so.
That's very fair, and I brought copies for everyone, if you'd like me to give you the copies now.
Mr. Coyle?
Yeah, just next time, before the meeting, would be...
And just briefly, I could share some of the numbers with you that Mr. Lorium will be handing out. Back in 2012, the volumes on Oxford Street North, south of Rochdale Street, were 14,779, and currently, just a few weeks ago, was 15,114.
Thank you.
So it's an increase of 2%.
Thank you.
Over that timeframe. That was a 2% increase. And then on Oxford Street North, north of Inwood Road, was actually a decrease in the volumes since 2012 to currently, and the volume went from 7,351 vehicles per day to 7,052, so that represents about a 4% decrease in volumes.
Is there anything else?
Thank you very much.
Do you want a minute on this, Mr. Simoneon, to review these numbers?
I'm sorry?
Did you want a minute to review these numbers before we take the vote?
Nope, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll be abstaining, Mass Dot is my employer, so it wouldn't be appropriate for me to vote.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thank you.
We'll see you when the numbers change.
Absolutely, anytime. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
The next item we have is a petition by Massachusetts Electric, National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated for a pole location relocation at West Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the hearing is open. Is there a representative here? Good evening. Thank you for waiting. If you could give your name for the record and tell us who you're representing.
Yeah, I'm Kellyanne Condon, I represent Verizon New England, Inc. And basically, this is for the street widening where the new middle school is going on West Street, and there are seven poles on the same side of the street as the school that need to be moved back. Various footages, they range from like six feet to, I believe, 18 feet, the furthest distance. There is one new pole that needs to be set on the opposite side of the road, and that's actually going right at the property line between 22 and 24 West Street. The purpose of the new pole, where we don't currently have a pole line, is because Pole 7, on the side the school is on, has these service wires that go over to House Number 24. So by moving Pole 7 back further, we need to place the pole on the other side of the street to keep the wire clearance above the road where it should be.
Will there be any disruption in service to either residents or businesses?
No, there won't.
Okay. Do members have any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, through the chair. When do you expect to be completing this? The cold weather's coming, and I'm sure with the snow banks and what have you, are you going to be doing that before the school is open? Are you going to wait till the spring? When is that going to happen?
Honestly, I, that was, I don't have a timeframe, I do have notes from my engineers, they are trying to rush this through, I don't know if it's something they plan on trying to get in before the weather turns. Verizon Construction will be in touch with DPW to let them know their schedule.
And one other question, I know that West Street is pretty narrow over there with the equipment in and out of there, is that going to have any disruption or traffic on that road, or will they be working kind of off the road there? Removing poles and what have you?
I imagine any disruption will be actually the large truck bringing the new poles themselves in there, they'll follow any requirements as far as detailed traffic plans, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simoneon?
Well, I understand that, but typically, when we've, since I've been here, the times we've had voted on this, it's been moving one pole. You're going to be doing eight of them all at once and working on both sides of the street?
I imagine they're going to set one pole at a time, so however many days.
But I mean, all in, all in one day? Is it, or is it going to be a series of days?
Well, I'm going to guess it's a series of days, they'll bring a pole in, set it, they'll have to bring another pole in. I can find out their exact timeframe and be in touch with the board and with DPW, let you guys know, but honestly, I don't know constructions' schedule or plan for that.
I, just for informational purposes, for the folks over there, I mean, I know a lot of people come down off of West Street during commuter times and into, onto Southbridge Street there, off of Route 2012, I mean, that would be good information, you know, so folks can plan to take another route if possible. That would be my concern, so.
All right, yeah, I'll make sure they let you know, like I said, we'll be in touch with the board and DPW on that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Are there any abutters here? The abutters are properly notified, you see that in your packet?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the petition?
Make a motion, we approve the petition for the pole relocation, the relocations as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thanks so much for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is also a 705 here, and Richard Lundgren Incorporated Motor Vehicle License 2, license at 525 Washington Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Good evening, also, thank you for waiting. If you could just give your name for the record, please?
Chris Moylan.
And Chris, just tell us why you're here tonight?
We applied for a license, class 2 license to open up 525. I believe there's an issue with one of the abutters on one of the fences that's been fixed. Everything, all of them, everybody was notified, all the abutters are notified, so.
Okay. But there was an issue with one of the abutters that's been resolved?
Yes.
Okay. Now, there any questions or comments? And you've gone before DCG, you are some, or a representative, and you're aware of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, just for the record, I'll read them into the record. There shall be no loading or unloading of vehicles within state highway layout, all loading and unloading of vehicles must be performed within the applicant's property, all vehicles must be parked on paved surfaces, this shall include customers and employees, all parking shall be per the approved site plan, the applicant shall not have in excess of 65 vehicles for sale on the lot at any time.
Yep.
If there's nothing from the board and there are no abutters here, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the application for license?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Simoneon?
This, is that yours that's in the packet here, the hand drawn?
I haven't seen it, but if you'd come and take a look at it, or give a question about it?
I just, I'm assuming those numbers denote parking spaces, is that...
Can I take a quick look?
Sure, absolutely. I, considering the conditions the DCG had, I just want to...
Yes, those are the ones that are in the front of the board.
Okay, so you've got, you've got parking there, and...
This is customer parking here, this would be the display parking.
I'm sorry, we have to go back to the microphone so that we can hear.
I'm sorry, I just needed clarification.
If you, hey, you can take a copy of mine. So, Mr. Simoneon asked...
The number ones are the ones in front, that would be customer parking.
Okay.
And then the display parking is along the front, more towards Route 20.
And that, okay, so then, 20 would be on the other side.
Yep, right where your glasses are.
All right, okay. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Is there anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, because we have someone in the audience, move up Agenda Item 8A.
Move it up, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So we have Polali Holdings LLC, sale of gas and oil in a common Victulus license at 860 Southbridge Street. Good evening, if you could give your name for the record and tell us why you're here tonight?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vasista Polali, and I'm here to apply for permit to, permit for sale of gas and oil in common which are licensed at 860 Southbridge Street. It's a BP gas station.
And you've met with the DCG, and you are familiar with the recommendations that they've made to this board for conditions?
Yes.
Okay, so for the record, the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits from the Board of Health, all final inspections are to be completed, the applicant shall obtain any necessary sign and building permits, including but not limited to a certificate of occupancy inspection, the applicant shall obtain site plan approval through the planning board for the inclusion of a U-Haul rental service and for any future expansion to include a restaurant or food service, and the applicant shall obtain all necessarily, necessary approvals from state agencies.
Yes.
You're familiar with that?
Yep.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, the applicants obtain a site plan approval through the planning board for the U-Haul. Have you been to the planning board for the U-Haul rental, and is that a plan in place, or is that coming in the future?
Coming in the future.
Coming in the future, so you do not have that now, and you are going to approach the planning board at that time?
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? So just so we're clear, your application does include the U-Haul, but the conditions will be if you don't have the license for the U-Haul until you go before the planning board?
Yes.
Although it's on your license, and if we approve the license as presented, there will be a condition that you have to go to planning board for site plan approval for the U-Haul business, so you cannot operate that until you go before planning board.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Mr. Simoneon?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if it's an oversight or not, but I would just caution board members on disposing of this, the social security number of the applicant is not blacked out.
That's the ID, that's the federal... That's a federal ID number.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, that's an EID number.
All right. Ah, yes, it is, I should have put my glasses on, sorry.
Is there any public comment on this? If there's nothing else from the board, I'll entertain a motion regarding the application.
Close the hearing?
No, it's not a hearing, it's just a...
Sorry. Make a motion, we approve the license, provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled, said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it, failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the licenses.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Good luck with your new business, and be sure to contact Town Hall if you have any questions through the process.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, everyone.
So going back to Agenda Item 7A, in your packet, there is a letter from Mass Development Finance Agency. It's more informational, Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, this is an informational item, as the chair mentioned, this is part of a standard procedure that Mass Development follows when they issue preliminary approvals for revenue bonds. I just want to note that this was a 19, I believe, a $19.5 million revenue bond amount that was given to a company that owns 22 facilities in Massachusetts, one of which was listed as located in Auburn. When we contacted Mass Development to find out more about this project, so we could, on behalf of the board, look under the regulations of Mass Development to see whether... on behalf of the board, look under the regulations of Mass Development to see whether this conflicted or complemented any of our local or regional plans, we were told that the Auburn project was taken out of the overall bonding, so there is no Auburn project going on at this time. And that was done after the notice was given. So at this point, there's nothing that the town needs to do.
Going back to Board of Selectmen general items, in your packet you have an application for a drain layers license, Alexander Construction Incorporated in Worcester. Patrick Scovone is the applicant. We have a letter of reference from the city of Worcester, from Holden, and we also have one from Shrewsbury, and it has been through the process, and Mr. Mitchell has signed off on this. And per policy, we don't require applicants for drain layers licenses to come before the board. So is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the license, provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its department, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Moving on, we did the seasonal open air, we did the gift acceptance, we have no proclamations. The next agenda item is a designate, for the board to designate a representative to the elementary school reuse disposition advisory group. So I'm just going to ask the town manager to tell us a little bit about this group that will be her appointment.
That's correct. Through the chair, we had made the board aware of this previously, that we're looking to put together a, an elementary school reuse disposition advisory group. And we had recommended that the group be made up of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the school committee, one member of the finance committee, one member of the school department, the director of development and inspectional services, and neighborhood residents, preferably from each of the neighborhoods that are directly impacted by the two schools that would be looked at, one of which would be the Julia Bancroft and the other one, the Mary Dee. So we are seeking a representative, the appointment actually needs to be made by town manager, but we're seeking the board to recommend to the town manager who to appoint to represent the board on this committee. Again, the finance committee, I believe, will be voting at the next meeting to make their appointment. The school committee has voted to make their appointment. And the others would be filled again by a couple of town employees who would be involved in this, as well as a couple of residents. And we're leaving the number of residents a little bit fluid. I believe we had said between two and four, because we have to make sure that the group would have an uneven number. So depending on how many representatives we get to fill the other constituencies, we want to then make sure that we're not coming up with an even number at the end.
Okay. So you're looking at a seven to nine member?
I believe it would be, yes, I believe it would be seven. Yeah, between seven and nine.
So I believe we've discussed this in the past. There were members who indicated an interest, so those who are interested, if you want to make a statement as to why you're interested in serving on this. Who's, Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes, I would love to be involved in this committee. I think, as all of you know, as I was re-elected in the past election, it's been very, it's been very evident that we need more elderly housing in the town. And I believe, maybe, I'm not quite sure how long it was ago, maybe close to a year now, that I had asked Ms. Jacobson that I would love to be on the committee, to see if either one of those buildings would be suitable for elderly housing. I went to Mary Dee. I've lived in the town, and I certainly think we can find some great resources for those buildings.
Who else is interested? Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I would kind of copy with what Mrs. Brotherton said. I've been in the town since day when I went to school there, and I think that with the up and coming projects going, I know there's going to be renovations to some of the buildings, and there's going to be some, probably some new construction, there may be more renovations to some of the municipal buildings. I think, you know, I would definitely take a great interest in seeing exactly which way we go, not being so focused on one individual part of it, but, you know, just what a good use would be of the building. Buildings.
Is there anyone else? No one else? So we have two members who have shown an interest in serving on this subcommittee the board would need to take a vote to recommend a designated to the town manager.
Motion to appoint Mrs. Brotherton.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Oh, it's only one? All right. Well, that's fine.
Do you want to...
No, 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 I don't want to reconsider. I'm happy to, glad you're going.
Next, we have town manager items. We have a vote to accept grant funds from the National Council on Aging.
Through the chair, this is, again, we're calling it a grant fund. This was not a competitive program, but this is a pilot program that the senior senate director, Minion Murray, had worked on in her previous location in Newton, and, excuse me, Natick, and had then gone back to the National Council on Aging to see if they would be willing to allow such a pilot program to be tried out in Auburn. So the program is a twenty-five hundred dollar grant. This is just the draft agreement. I know one of the members wanted to see more information on some of the grants, so we submitted to you the draft agreement that they provided to us. And I do have to point out that on page five, it needs to be revised, because the agreement that was provided to us has different dates on it. So those dates on page five for the period of performance would be September 1, 2014 to March 31, 2015. And the agreement was just received recently. The portion of this program that they're funding, it's called the Aging Mastery Program, and it has a number of different modules to it. The one that would be funded through this twenty-five hundred dollar pilot would be what you call the financial fitness component of it, which works with our seniors and elder population to prevent, first of all, to help them with financial and budgeting issues, and to prevent what we, is commonly called financial abuse, situations where people take advantage financially of the elderly. So it's a, it's a very good program. Again, it's been done in a couple of other places in the country, and we're hoping to be able to start this in the late fall and spring.
Other than any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment through the chair. The administration never ceases to amaze me with the amount of grant money coming into the town. There is a lot of time afforded putting these grants together, and I think the town is well benefited by this grant application process in all modes. And I would like to commend the administration for the application process, which is, like I say, is a, quite a chore to do, and we, the town's benefited, so I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Through the chair, I should comment to that, as part of the performance evaluations for each of the department heads, we have a standing goal in each of theirs, which is to seek and secure grant funding where possible, to promote and support initiatives within your department. So I thank you for saying that, and I want to give credit to the department heads, because they've really done that. They've gone out and actively sought and gone after grants, and it really has benefited the town. So we appreciate the comments. Thank you.
If there's nothing further, is there a motion?
Motion to accept a twenty-five hundred dollar financial education, financial education component of the grant fund from the National Council on Aging.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Was the library renovation update covered?
Through the chair, yes, that was covered. The library director, I spoke earlier.
Okay, thank you. And the tree lighting?
The tree lighting, I just want to make a note that the tree lighting this year, as the last couple of years, this is the third year we've done it, will be on the Friday the week after Thanksgiving. So it's never the Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, but a Friday a week later. And this year, that is December 5th. It is at 6:00 PM, and it is held at the fire station headquarters on Auburn Street. Special guest, of course, Santa. And generally, Santa has an elf in tow to help Santa. And we have the countdown to the tree lighting. And again, this year, we're thrilled, we have the high school band, the high school chorus, and the community chorus all coming out of the high school. And it's just a really nice family event, community event that we put on. And the Bay Path Vocational School Culinary Arts students make the cookies and sweets, and we provide cocoa and coffee, which in prior years we've really needed, because the temperature's been rather chilly. So we hope that you can all attend, and we just want to make sure the community is aware of it, which is why we put it on tonight's agenda. But just so you know, it's also been advertised, Auburn Mass Daily's been kind enough to put something in. It's been on Auburn Community Television, our social media pages, and our website.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. We have no table items. Under Board of Selectmen member items, Mr. Holstrom, please.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you.
What we have in front of us tonight is something that we had spoke of, is the, one of our goals from, for 2014, to review and update the license applications under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. What you have in front of you tonight is a, we've compiled a new application here, and I would want to say thank you to Ms. Patsy Borogad for all the assistance with that, and also with the building department for the additional form that we have in the back, which is the permit license information sheet, which is going to accompany this application. We'd gone through a lot of the applications. A lot of them were pretty much the same. A lot of them didn't have even the town logo on them, and the information was just kind of thrown in as we needed it and what they thought of. So we compiled all that information and put it together, and this is what you have in front of you tonight. That pretty much summarizes what we would need for businesses, the location, the names of people involved, the operation hours, and towards the bottom, it also gives you a little bit about the history, what, you know, some of these businesses would be for history, and, you know, where they've come from, what other businesses they have. And then, at the very bottom, is the building division sign-off. You know, what we did is we looked at that, because this pink sheet that's going to follow along with it is the form that used on the DCG. And the DCG has all these, the treasurer collector, the town clerk, the fire, police, DPW, they all have input to, you know, a license coming through, depending upon what the application is. So there is check-offs, there are sign-offs, so it's checks and balances. And you'll find that the back page of the pink sheet is the Department of Development and Inspection Services, the building division. The other last sign-off on there, as well as the application in the front, the building division sign-off, so if there are any changes to a location, a building, any kind of renovations, additions, subtractions, deletions, the building department will be the last one to look at that, review the whole sheet, and then sign it off. And after it's been through the DCG, the building division has signed it off, and will come back to us as a completed document. The applications we've gone through, the ones that would be covered by this form would be ones like consignment shops, flea markets, transit vendors, hotel motel licenses, seasonal open-air licenses, like we've had tonight, coin-operated amusement machines and kino, entertainment license, sale of oil and gas and common victula. The ones that do not, we cannot use this for is under the alcoholic beverage license. That is a state form, it's mandated by the state, and they are the ones that control the application. Also, the automotive class one, two, and three for sales and repair is also a state form, and that is something that the state will control and will follow along through. But the DCG form, the pink sheet here, also goes along with that, so that all the department heads and departments in the town that it applies, they will have their input to it. The drain layers license, we had a drain layers license tonight. The sewer department has their own form, and I'm not going to get involved with something that's in place, that they, they're pretty much a self-sufficient department. The form has been working well, and it's, we're going to see it, but they have a form in place, and we will continue along using that. The BYOB, the juice bar, that's a bylaw, it's something we've already talked about and discussed in the past. The taxi cab, that's another one, a bylaw that we've already talked about. And the secondhand junk dealers is also a bylaw. So these have all been worked on through the bylaw committee and have been approved, and we're not going to try to reinvent the wheel with that. So what I've, what you've got in front of you tonight is the, kind of a standard application now with the form for the DCG to accompany it, and so the sign-offs will be done as required. If you have any questions, again, I'd like to thank Patsy Borogad, and also to the building division for all the assistance with putting this form together.
Mr. Simoneon?
Just two things. Obviously, a good amount of work went into this, and I think it will clarify some things, but I, I've done a lot of documentation over the years, and one of the things that typically is shied away from is putting names rather than titles, because as people leave positions, it kind of renders a form obsolete, and then you wind up having to have brand-new forms for what be... I, I think, you know, having the, the office treasurer collector, town clerk, board of assessors is, would be sufficient for routing it, just, you know, an observation. And also, the only other thing I'm just wondering is, probably the one thing I hear in regard to permitting and licensing from, if there's any, anything at all, it's that, you know, sometimes parts of the process can be a little lengthy, and I just want to make sure we're not adding time to any of the process. Other than that, I think, you know, it captures a good amount of information that, you know, we would always have for historical purposes and other things. So those would be my only two questions in regard to that.
Okay. For me, to your comments, right now, the DCG form that you have in front of you does have the names on it. It's kind of more or less a, kind of a directional, that those are the people in place that you would want to discuss and want to talk about this application process with. The numbers are there, the treasurer collector, that's their title. We just put the names on there, like I say, it's something they're using right now. It kind of helps them through to get them, you know, some direction of who they're actually going to talk to, instead of just a individual department. We can change that, it's a matter of, and as a matter of fact, we've changed some of this, because some of the people that were on here before with this application and this form, we've already changed them out and replaced them. So it's a matter of just going in and changing it over. In regards to, also to that, we're looking into possibly electronic development of this, so that can be passed around between departments, instead of a hard copy like this right now. So we are looking at it electronically for down the road.
Just, I want to, do we, are there, are there any specific timeframes in between each of these steps? Anything that's required, or do we try to just have a reasonable sort of ballpark figure? I don't know. I'm just wondering if maybe something of that nature, without, you know, again, forcing any department into a position that...
Currently, when this is used, it's up to the applicant to move from department to department and have it signed off on. They may have to leave it, you know, for a day or two. There are no timelines. It's just getting it through the permitting process.
So if we're doing that, then I guess, how does an electronic copy being passed between departments help if the person actually has to, is responsible for physically walking it from department to department?
Well, go ahead, Mr. Holstrom.
Yeah, this application process, the, that we have, this is the initial piece of, the initial document for that person to come in and say, this is what I want to do, where I want to do it, and how it's going to be done.
Okay.
This form here is for the DCG, and usually what happens is, it sounds like that person's going to walk it through from department to department, but most of the time, this is all transmitted through to the different departments, let them know that this is coming on board, and they say that we're going to have a DCG meeting, and they invite that person, the applicant, to that meeting, so he's not, you know, going all around town trying to get this information.
Oh, no, makes sense. I'm just, so, but they actually have to walk this hard copy?
Currently... Currently, they do that. When they leave DCG and they have been given direction by DCG, they, they walk. So this has been in place, this pink form.
Yep.
Mr. Holstrom has been working on the new application and trying to streamline this and through his conversations, and I don't want to be speaking with you, for you, but through his conversations regarding this form, there's, and they would like to look at having this done online, have it passed from department to department. So now the applicant isn't responsible for driving to the fire department, correct?
No, that makes sense.
Yeah. So it's just trying to streamline it.
Right. So totally understand, makes sense, cuts down on paper, it saves money and that's great. If I'm walking this by hand, I have a certain responsibility as the person walking it to get each of the departments to sign off on it. If we're going to do it electronically from department to department, will that person still have the ability to track where it's at? You know, Sim, again, I don't think, I don't think it's going to be something as complex as FedEx allowing you to track a package. But if I, I obviously have a concern if I'm routing this after I've met with the DCG, would I be able to, you know, as the person who these conditions are being put on or whatever it is, to track my paperwork to know where it is at any given time? So that would be my...
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, as I had mentioned earlier, this is not in electronic copy as yet. It's something we are going to be working on down the road and I will take note that, you know, for the tracking, I think that's an excellent idea so that that applicant, if he needs to know where this is and what the statuses of his application, then we should be able to find that out. But again, it's, it's not done electronically yet. It's something for down the road, but we need to standardize an application so that we can pull this out, give it to them, let them fill it out and get it back and start the process.
I understand. And like I said, I think it's great. That, as long, as long as someone can track this, then fantastic. And again, I don't think it should be like a burden to, you know, employees to have to go and look up and take time from other things. If we can make it easy for someone to, I don't know, through the website, quickly find out where it is, I don't know, you know, if there's, if we can find a simple way to do that, I think that would be great because then again, it's not involving employees taking away from other things that they have to do and other projects they're working on or whatever it is. So I...
So noted.
I think it looks great and I love the, you know, that the application will now be consistent with the town's logo, with contact information, the website. So thank you for all your efforts.
Nice job, Ken.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else on that?
No, that's it. If we do get into the electronic submission at some point, then I will bring it back. But for now, I believe we've met the goal of the Board of Selectmen for standardizing the application.
Is there any additional public comment? I just want to, well, first of all, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and remind everyone that the John E. and Ethel E. Riley Outstanding Citizenship Award will be given this Wednesday evening at 7:30 PM to Ken Ethier. That ecumenical service takes place at St. Thomas this year and it's a wonderful, wonderful community event and certainly a well-deserved recipient of that award. So I hope many of you can attend to support and congratulate Mr. Ethier and his award. Mr. Simontian?
Yeah, just for the record, before we close the meeting, probably not needed, but I've stayed in the past that I've been part of the Auburn Fast Pitch softball and I didn't think about it until after Mr. Frost concluded his comments. Just for the record, I voted on it, but I have, I'm no longer involved. My daughter's no longer playing softball league. They're beyond the age group that they support. So I had no financial gain, any interest whatsoever in what's going on. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. We have the minutes of June 23, 2014. If there's no corrections or omissions, the chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you and good night.